We did combine the fire alarm and the traffic electricians at the one unit. I think that paid immediate benefits, allowing to work together pulling cable with the crazy square right here in the city hall grounds outside, as well as Crown College and recently down Conshigee Utility. That's generally work we have to go alongside for, because we have manual labor, train, manual and lots of labor. We worked together on emergency response issues, particularly it was helpful when two bucket trucks were required, which were several instances where multiple bucket trucks were required to solve either a fire alarm issue or a street light type of issue. And most recently, they worked on the Sterling Middle School power issue. Power was knocked out at Sterling Middle School last weekend. We worked with the fire chief, electricians in. We moved a generator from the Ford River Shipyard out to Sterling Middle School. We rewired that into the school system to get the school system operational. We also, that same weekend unfortunately, we had to work on a fire alarm network cut that knocked out half of the city's fire alarm system or more. And that was a six or eight hour splicing job that was required. We called all the electricians together to do that. I think there was 240 or 260 pairs that had to be respliced and rewired together. Also, as I mentioned already, that we worked together on the school alarm, school alarm system rehabilitation replacement program, bringing electricians in all weekends to replace these alarm systems and the horns and the smoke. That is, rather than go outside for $40,000, $50,000, we would do that job for $14,000, $15,000 ourselves. Schools own flashlights, I mentioned we're doing that right well as well. To space your community meetings, council to space, I know the community meeting, I think we did five, six other meetings around the city as well to really listen to constituents and see what's on their minds and hopefully address some of their issues. The Siemens LED conversion project took up a lot of our time this year, in particular doing an audit of everything in the city with them, working through those issues. We're involved with 50-plus planning reviews, inspection type of work both from a fire alarm perspective as well as from a traffic and parking perspective. It's a tremendous amount of work that Finnegan focuses probably 75% of the time on that alone. When you have a large development, you don't review the plan, you don't review the 50-page plan once, you're good 6 or 7 times. To make sure that what you gave them on the fifth time was done in the sixth version. So it's a tremendous amount of work. We have to do that for both the sprinkler and the safety systems as well as for the traffic and parking. Traffic signal repair is a constant challenge. It's almost every night we have a traffic signal go down, someone will be in the city. They unfortunately generally happen in the middle of the night, we get a call from the police department immediately. I think the average age we're looking at right now is 30 to 40 years old. Many have exceeded their useful life with the controls or the small computer systems inside there and are very limited. We patch and we provide temporary fixes, we don't really resolve the issue, which is kind of doing a temporary repair of the issue, we understand that, but it takes dollars and resources to do that. We'll talk about that, I think, in a few weeks when we talk about the citywide traffic parking condition in the school setting. We do know, as I think mentioned, we have three, four intersection that go down every time drains, so we're kind of on top of that, but the concern is we won't be able to fix it again. So that's always a concern. Traffic signal loops, we did repair over 20 of those. That's a constant source of frustration for drivers within the city. When you come up to an intersection, you know it should be changing, especially when you see no traffic going the other direction, and yet you're still five cars sitting in a light, that's what happens when traffic signal loops go down. They can go down because of age and wear and tear on those, because of water issues, because of salt issues, as well as contractor cuts and other things like that.
So on that, like, do you have an inventory of kind of the lighting situations with the traffic lights around the city and sort of when, I don't know, when their useful light is up, they should be replaced?
No, no, we don't, no. That's one of the things we'll be doing, one of the initial events in the citywide study. Taking inventory of every single intersection, the age, the capabilities, the wear and tear that may be in the section, whether or not we should replace it or repair it.
So there's nothing we know now?
I'm sorry?
There's nothing we know now.
Well, we know that many of them, you know, a lot, there's been a lot of you guys that have started lighting, and you didn't see it, you were always like, look at what I've done.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's just-
I can go on, but you accomplish now, Mr. George.
No, I mean, there's a lot of hit or miss things, but that's kind of like for open call, you know? I'm wondering more how time spent, and it sounds like there's time spent in many different directions. You know, my biggest concern is with traffic and parking mostly, because those are some of the greatest issues that I get calls about. And, you know, I'm just wondering what that plan is up in. We've got a lot of things coming down the pipe, especially Walls and P Station is going to be shut down, North Quincy Park lot is going to be shut down, Quincy Center does not have a garage, Quincy Act will have support under the garage. So I want to know what the plan is for handling parking situations around those areas. Selfishly, I want to know more for my area. You did send me an email suggesting that there was going to be a parking plan implemented, and we tried in a certain area, but I don't see anyone talking about the ramifications of these construction projects that are taking place. And that's not solely your fault, but it does fall on you because it's your department. So I want to know what you need to handle those situations, because I've got, you know, people that are freaking out because they're going to have to take bus one stop from Wallaston to North Quincy, and there's already a glut of cars on the road, new traffic issues up everywhere that she alluded to earlier. So what's the plan?
Well, I have another plan. I think we have to work with the MTA on a continuous basis as those plans change and evolve. There will be a driver behind a lot of this, and to develop something, actually. I'm not entirely sure what that will be. I know in North Quincy, they put that passing people from Marina Drive-
Well, it's not just the T, by the way. It's generally for our neighborhoods, especially as more cars are on the road, we've got parking situations, so we need to rid you of roads and do all that. So what's-
Well, you know, I think the short term, there's immediate, there's a little bit longer term. I think my biggest concern right now is about some of the things you mentioned, the development activities, the rehab for the T, the need, the issue that we're going to have to respond to, that I think is going to be changing every single day, so that's one issue. I think the longer term issue, it should be the city addressing and building residential parking plans. And I didn't assume, I know we've talked about that before, and, you know, I could see six or seven different residential parking plans within the city. The needs of Moncler are different than the needs of Powell's Pack.
Oh, totally. And I think it just needs to be started, though. And then neighborhoods are not in, maybe that's how the city Boston does it, you position your neighborhood, and you get it done, that's fine.
Yeah, I've talked to the consultant, he will be ready for it, for you to know, we do the citywide already about that, and really looking at the different neighborhoods, what kind of plans other cities and communities have, what should we be doing in those areas? Because I do think it's necessary as well. You really kind of figuring out what you want to do for overnight parking within the city, making sure that the residential plans we implement do not encourage more overnight parking, so some of those issues too. As well as kind of a business district parking plan as well for the law enforcement, for Wallaston, less than 150,000, but I think that's one of the tests. I'm not talking about-
Do you think, your department here, do you think you have too much on your plate?
I think I have a lot on my plate. I don't want to say too much, we, I mean, a lot of mornings I feel I have too much on my plate. And we managed to plow through it with your help and with Omega Self and Stephen as well. The police chief, the fire chief have been great to work with, they're always positive. I need something, I get it, so I'm not concerned about that. It's just a huge issue. I think, you know, that local neighborhood parking, it is becoming a bigger and bigger issue every day, I think.
It's a huge, that's the point-
Neighborhood issues?
Sorry to interrupt, it's, that's the point. It's a huge issue, traffic and parking are huge, huge issues, but it's taken one year since we even floated a discussion about pedestrian inter-traffic study, or whatever you want to call it, to approve RFP. So if we can't get that moving, then I'm just concerned that either you're overloaded or the management in the department, or, you know, the folks that you have with you aren't giving the support that you need. And that's difficult, because these are issues that need to be fixed yesterday. So what do we do?
Well, I think we continue to move forward. We'll, as I requested, we'll do a traffic engineering budget with the budget, that'll be a secondary direction. It's not going to resolve all the parking issues. I think, as someone alluded to in an earlier discussion, I think there's you, council, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, traffic enforcement and parking is something we have to look at as a city. You know, ideally, I'd like to see a group going out every single night and telling every single car in the city that's parked at the 10th and 5th.
So why are you doing that?
Well, I don't think we've got budgeted for that, I'm not sure we've put together a agenda to do that. I think that's something the mayor I've talked about a little bit, and I think we'd like to look at that. I think that's something in every city I've talked, the consultants about doing is we staff and resource properly, both with the police department, who supports us on a daily basis, but within my department, news members. And I'd also like to see, you know, everybody parked within 20 feet of the minutes section, and that every single night, kind of set down some of these rules for local parking. And then we can move to the neighborhoods and do that. We're not staffed to do that right now, and I remember calling up in the city, and maybe Council Phil, if any of you noticed this as well, we have a traffic enforcement division within the city, but traffic enforcement division, cars and personnel, that will really be focused on managing traffic and parking issues within the city. Is that something we should move back to? I don't know if that's something we're going to do.
Well, I mean, I thought you were the traffic, I thought you would collaboration-
But I don't have enforcement powers. Our traffic, our parking control offices don't have non-vehicles, they use their personal vehicles, they don't have company phones, they use personal phones. It's more of a walking type job for these folks.
Yeah.
They haven't been trained in de-escalation techniques with, you know, working with people out in the streets. So there's some issues here that I think we need to look at.
I still need more clarity on this million dollars here close to for maintenance and street lighting, and why, given that you just approved all this funding for replacement of the lights. So we're not realizing that until 2019, but does that mean this number will then come out for our next budget?
That number for the next budget should go down by 60%, 60%.
Okay.
And remain that way, you know, for next year.
Okay. Well, we'll continue this discussion on the way, I've been taking up a lot of time. Thank you.
Thank you, council. We're going to go over here, Mike, and, you know, I'm sort of listening to you articulate your thoughts, and, you know, we looked at this department a year ago, and it's sort of like a blank canvas, right? So it's heavily communicated, as I've heard it, and asked the Lloyd Council as to say whether or not we're hearing things, but traffic and parking, you know, at least one out of every two or three phone calls I get relates to, you know, traffic and parking. And me personally, this is just my own sort of view of the world, I don't always think it's, you know, a solution to, you know, increase payroll all the time. What I mean by that is, we started with a blank canvas there. That's what we started. We said, I want to be the guy, and we said, okay, we'll talk to you in a year. So that being said, you have freedom of flexibility to get creative. And just a thought, and I don't know, you know, you mentioned about marketing, I don't even know what that means, but just a thought, like, if you needed boots on the ground, because it sounds like these folks, you know, the parking attendants have sort of like a military group, right? Like they walk around and they enforce parking. Wouldn't it be out of the realm of possibility, you know, that the Fordwood Collaboration would say, Quincy College, is anybody interested in coming and taking up a position as a parking enforcement individual? And essentially, their pay is based on the revenue that they generate from writing citations. So you're not assuming any payroll cost, and this is just a thought after listening to you, you're not assuming any payroll cost, but you're capturing 100% more of the revenue than otherwise you would have now. I don't know. But that's just a thought.
You know, it's innovative, but I'm not sure if you are, it's a very contentious position doing that, and dangerous at times as well, and it's not something we're hiring students in.
So you're in, so what do you talk, eliminate or just add another department?
Add what?
Add another department?
No, I'm saying, I said that's something that we should evaluate is, are we doing traffic and parking enforcement right away? And I'm not sure we are, I think that's something that we should look at, you know?
Yep. I'll come back, I know that my fellow council, I can't just stay away, I don't know if council come with you, Forrest was first, I'll vote please first, council Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. Council Kane had a lot of great points, but as a board council, I think, you know, we could copy and paste on our remarks. And Mike, I have to say, he was a high assist department, it has really been tremendous. I know we've had a lot of conversation and dialogue about the issues coming before. It was great to hear statistics, because I joked that particularly on the traffic and parking requests were like, you know, that they go on the carousel, carousel keeps going around, doesn't stop, problems get solved, and that's been an issue, right? It's like I have a thousand windows open on the computer screen, none of them getting closed out because the alarms pending the backlog. Off the top of my head, you know, we had a lot of look at the area off of Quincy Show Drive and Frentworth Parkway, kind of that San Sato Cut Through intersection, tried different things, spent a lot of time, had like the chief reference early to signage up there in the traffic. This is a request, well, maybe we need to do 100 here, maybe we need additional signage. So this has kind of been a topic that, where's the response to the neighborhood is the answer? Stop sign, interested, that back rock in Melbourne, out of house, and I can go on and on with all those pending requests that are likely, I'd like to close that out, I'd like to close that. Whatever the answer is, yes, you can go, no, it can't go. But when you look at the volume of requests that are being managed through your department, it's very understandable why we have to triage and what's getting dealt with first. So I understand that, but for us as board councils, it's very difficult for our constituents to understand why does it take so long to get these answers? So it's, I'm glad to hear, because one of my questions was going to be, again, the technology, what technology are you using, and who's implementing it? So I think with you and this work management software that you're utilizing, is that something that our IT department brought to your attention as a resource for you, or that you went out and researched, and how do we select what we're using?
Well, we did talk to IT, that was our first step, and then we looked at some other departments we're using, and then we did some research on our own.
Other Quincy departments or other municipalities?
Other Quincy departments, and we called vendors, we saw what they were using as well. This system is also, you know, being reviewed by the W as well, so I'd seen it before. So I think it's a pretty good system, just has a couple of work things that we can get fixed.
And, you know, I think there's this constituent, and I'll have these questions when Mr. Kane gets up here, but, you know, there was supposed to be this workload system that's citywide at all departments, and then we're running the report this room, so we can pull up, hey, what's happening, what do I have pending, what's going on in traffic, what's going on in various departments, and, you know, some sort of system that encompasses everybody so we can manage the workflow, I think that's really important. And again, this is, you have limited resources, a lot of work in play, you're doing really well with what you have, I think you've got some innovation that particularly you bring to the department. Your staff are always terrific and responsive, you know, Fran Nardis, every time I have an issue, he's right on it, knows what's happening, been out in the field, and comes back with response, so I do appreciate that. My joke with you has been about the antiquity of the signalization, you talked about these twenty loops that we've been able to repair, and you've talked about the signal, I joke, I think maybe you mean like a historic preservation wrench or something, the signals that we have that are some of the most major intersections in the city, and, you know, Council Kane referenced we have inventory, the answer's no. Some of these major intersections, we talked about Bergen and Granite, and how I visited Jeff Fineman's office, there's a kind of a historic signal there, and I joked like, oh, the history Buffy is saving this? No, Jack Gillen saved it, that's the spare parts, the intersection has a pin that you pull out and insert into the next hole to adjust the signal timing. I mean, this has got to be from the 50s, and this is what's running one of the most major intersections in the city of Quincy. So, you know, it's past time for us to invest in our traffic infrastructure, and we as board council are hearing, this is our biggest complaints, I mean, particularly just to get through the Dimmer intersection, and the afternoon and evening has always been a challenge, we get new signalizations coming on, but the signal leading up to it, our end may be not flowing through. We talked about Seaton Southern Highway, you know, really some of these hot, hot spots that are real frustration that we hear day in and day out from our constituents. With that, it wants to lead me to my questions about how, one of my biggest challenges prior to you coming on has been the coordination with the state agencies, because a lot of it isn't intersections that are not within our control. So for example, C and Braff Highway, C, was it state-controlled intersection, Seaton Southern Highway, right?
C Street.
Quincy Show Drive and C.
Quincy Show Drive and C.
Frentworth Parkway.
Frentworth Parkway.
Frentworth Parkway and Southern Highway. So, you know, some of the problems that are infiltrating the neighborhoods are not the municipality's responsibility to fix, but, so how has that been for you in terms of the state?
Well, we're going to say, we've got to direct line to them. So when we have an issue, they have reported to us, then we call them, and they're fairly responsive. In fact, they use many of the same methods we do as well. So, you know, when we hear a light going down or traffic issue, then we call them. Where we have less influence is really developing new plans with them, they kind of, well, we're going in this direction, you know, you guys want to go with us, we have less impact in that area, but we do have access to it.
You know, that's part of the other frustration in workload, is the intersection, Seaton Quincy Show Drive, we've been talking about, hey, we're going to fix this, we've been talking about it for years, it's a state-funded project, it's in the state's lead agency, and people are like, when are you going to get an update? And what a length of time. So again, it's hard for these constituents to understand what's taking so long with the design phase, and when can we expect the fix? Because we all know, you know, it's a rated fail intersection, it has a heavy volume, some of the most heavy volume of traffic, particularly in the morning commute coming through the city. And then the last, my last comment is something that I know we're having a capital improvement plan as a citywide assessment, something I am anxious to support because it's long since due, and I think the game council came to meet up on it, is what's the game plan? Residents should know what to expect, but in the meantime, it's very reactive, and this counselor complains, the logs are, you know, so-and-so's blocking my driveway, they put a no parking sign, it came down my driveway, kind of hat failed the boy, and you're, you get these same issues all throughout the city versus we had a plan. So I really look forward to the findings. I think what, when you said, hey, you know, every night, uniform enforcement, I think whatever it needs to be is consistent, and that the residents need to know, all of a sudden, if we're going to decide this is the time, we're going to have a citywide parking plan and parking enforcement, that needs to be communicated to the residents so that they know what to expect. Because, you know, it's a surprise when you get a ticket, because one neighborhood complains, and you've always parked there, you know, so I think that's a definite challenge for us. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, council. Excuse me, council, Val Muji?
Thank you. Good morning, Mike. Good morning. Couple things that you want to run quick through with you in terms of the budget. The senior traffic engineer grade from 17 to 18, from the year 17 to 50, the year 18 went from 59,000 to zero. There's a couple of other positions, the parking controller specialist and the signal maintainer. I presume that those are incorporated in the electrician or the junior traffic engineer?
Yeah, signal maintain has been changed to electrician. Those are logic title changes, which is adding one position to the budget.
Which is the junior traffic engineer. Okay, so that junior traffic engineer lineup, 141,000 represents two people?
Two.
Okay. Same salary?
Uh...
Approximately?
Approximately, yeah.
Okay. The overtime, $160,000, that accounts for how many people? How many people are pulling off that overtime?
Uh... That's probably about 60 or 70 people.
Okay. And then the traffic signal loop repair, I think you touched on that, the $10,000?
For the budget, yes.
What is that?
Traffic, the traffic signal loops are actually pieces of wire that are in the ground. When you approach them on your car, you go over in your car-
Send the signal.
Send the signal there, it's time to change that.
So you didn't have money for that last year?
No.
So what do we do?
We took some of it out of maintenance repair, we took some of it out of contractual, we took some of it out of supplies.
And this number is based upon what you spent this year, and you think you need for-
It's about half of what we spent this year right now. And the logic behind that, council, is that we fixed 20 of them, hopefully we'll only have 20 more to fix next year, so hopefully it'll be a lesser amount.
Okay. And I don't see a contractual line in here, maybe I'm just missing it, but do you have a contractual line?
Yes, we do, it's 75,000, it's 530303.
Oh, okay. And that's it for contracted services, 75,000, wrong?
Yes.
It seems low.
Oh, it is, and, well, I think that will be augmented by, you know, some CIP requests. That's really to do all those improvements, that type of thing.
Right. I feel as though, over the past year, some of the major, maybe going back to last year, some of the major intersections were, like, I'm digging Bergen Parkway and Senate Street, that was, every time I called about an issue there, I was told that that was a contractor doing that work. So I assumed, I guess, in my mind, that, well, if a major intersection like that has a contractor, then other major intersections must be subbed out?
Well, again, not intersection specific, we do have a contract, right now we're in that category, and I can't recall exactly how much it's for, but for an outside contract, it's called emergency repair. You know, we try to do that work ourself first-
Right.
But if we can't do it, that needs a round standby for us to call as well.
Okay. Over the last couple of years, I've found the traffic department to be unresponsive, sluggish, and entirely reactive. I think over the past year, since we reorganized, the responses, the response rate has been better under your leadership, but I still think it's a reactive department. I don't think we're proactive, that's not a criticism of you, I've had conversations with you, and I know that that's, we share the same vision in terms of that's where we would like to be. In terms of your department, I still think because it's a new department, that the members of this body were around when we created it, that there's still a little bit of a, you know, kind of you have to dance for your supper a little bit, prove your worth in terms of being its own entity. I think you're well on your way to doing that, but I feel, to continue to express to you, that my concern that we're not, and I know it's one of the shared, that we're not solving problems permanently, you know, we're doing patchwork. You know, you're patching together intersections that are barely functioning. Our intersections, I don't believe, I don't believe all of our intersections are connected timing-wise anymore. I think there is something like, I knew these numbers at one point, but something like 21 or 18 intersections that at one point were timed together throughout the city in a master kind of flow pattern, and when they go offline, and you're prepared to come online, the timing gets out of whack. I don't think we're at the same place that we were maybe four or five years ago in terms of timing the intersections throughout the city for maximum flow. Is that, is that a fair statement, you think?
I would say so.
The concerns that I hear from residents, development, roads, traffic, those are the top three, the trifecta of 90% of my calls. And I'm curious, I guess, as, and we talked about this a little bit as well, the citywide traffic, I, my position on that now, and I don't think we've had, you know, full hearings or presentation on it, but the citywide traffic study that's in the CIP, I don't, at this time, based on my understanding of it and what I know, I don't plan on supporting that. Because I don't think, I, quite frankly, I think it's great to tell residents when they call about a traffic problem, say, oh, well, we're going to study that in the citywide traffic study. We're going to study that, we're going to take a look at it, we've never done this comprehensive a traffic study before in the history of the city. And that sounds great, and that person might hang up the phone and feel very satisfied, but then at the conclusion of that traffic study, when we look at everything that needs to be done in the city, we still have the same staff that has a backlog of 1,400 open items. Just because we do the study and identify the problems doesn't mean that we then have the manpower and/or the resources to implement the improvements. So while we may be able to identify through the traffic, the citywide traffic study, the problems, there's no solution. You know, the solution's a piece of paper that they hand to you and say, here you go, here's a solution to all the traffic problems, and you say, great, so, I'll get to it soon as I finish the 1,400, and then the public safety ones that come in that are a priority. I just don't see that as, to me, a reasonable way to manage our traffic in the city effectively. And I have reasons with the mayor as well, for my thinking on this is that we would be better off, rather than spending, I think- And I have reasons with the mayor as well, for my thinking on this is that we would be better off, rather than depending, I forget what the number is for the traffic, say, one point five, two million dollars? Two point four million dollars. I would rather see, I would rather see it done regionally, on a multi-year basis. Start with a major intersection, into something along those lines, or start with one ward, and then go to another ward, or something along those lines. But I would rather see a smaller investment in an overall study, if that's needed. With an investment into this department of additional traffic engineers and additional staff. I'd rather see two million dollars spent on building up the internal manpower of the department to, one, get through all of your backlogs, so you can come at some point, stand before a council, maybe not this council, but some council in the future, and say, counselors, we have a thirty-day response rate. Every request that comes in is addressed and resolved within thirty days. I mean, that, that's the ideal goal. Okay, well, this intersection isn't working right, and you have the manpower to get out there, to analyze it, to figure out what the problem is, but then also the manpower to resolve it in a reasonable amount of time. I think that makes us, puts us in a more proactive, rather than a reactive, position to managing the city's traffic problems. So I, I'm going to support the budget, right? I think it's a relatively straightforward budget. But I may not have supported this budget if it didn't have an additional engineering. I mean, I would, if you told me you wanted four junior traffic engineers, you'd get my vote for that. I told the mayor that as well. I think we need to, we need to staff this with people who can in-house. Say you, say you reorganized the department in a way, if you had new engineers, if you have, say, four traffic engineers, junior, senior, whatever you want to call them. And two of them can handle the day-to-day stuff, which is what's happening now, and then two additional bodies come in. One conducts studies, they lay down the strips, they do the counts, they do the speed. They are proactively looking at intersections that are reported to them that are problems, or streets that are issues, they do the analysis. And then that other new traffic engineer does the implementation of solutions. And they work together hand-in-hand, proactively, analyzing, and then repairing, and making improvements. I think that would be a far better expenditure of taxpayer money than a citywide, a citywide traffic study that's going to tell us all the problems. We know what the problems are, you drive through the city, ask anyone, you take a survey, you know what the problems are. You really get into the weeds to have a traffic engineer tell you, well, this is why it's a problem, the signalization timing isn't right, it isn't linked up, you know, to a system over here, or, but then we don't have the manpower to fix that. And that, that's a major concern of mine. I don't think it's a viable solution. It sounds great, and it gets, you know, if the goal is to pacify people in their concerns about traffic, I think that's, that accomplishes that. If the goal is to solve the traffic problems we have in the city, I don't think it accomplishes that. So I sent this to you last year, which is if you find that you need more people, even if it's in the middle of the budget, which I think it's unusually if we add staff in the middle of the budget, but I would support that. If you come back and tell me that we're going to add another traffic engineer, you know, in six months, you know, mid-budget season, I would support that. I'll continue to support adding traffic professionals to this department who can offset the fourteen hundred open tickets that you have as well as, hopefully, after we get over that hill, that fourteen hundred, we can start proactively attacking some of this. Because until we do that, I think we're going to continue to have these problems. Anything you want to say to any of that?
Well, first of all, I do want to thank you for your support, we have worked together a lot last year. And I do share some of the same concerns you have about a citywide traffic, parking, pedestrian, bicycle study. You know, and, you know, I've thought about this, and I've actually talked to consultants about that, is, you know, what I don't want to see happen is have an extensive, expensive, extensive and expensive study done of all these issues in the city. And they give me an eight-inch binder that says, you know, for sixty-two million dollars, you can do all this stuff, you know, over the next ten or twenty years. And, you know, myself in the mayor's office, we met with these folks and say, you know, what we want to do is put together a plan where you go out and study something. And as soon as you study that intersection, you give it right back to me, and you say, we're going to need thirteen thousand, or thirty-three, or fifty-three, or one hundred and sixty-three to fix that intersection. And then we come back to you and say, I want approval for this type of money to fix this. I think we will make a big mistake if we, in matter of fact, it's somewhat of a misnomer in my, in my mind, that this is a study. It should be a study and an implementation or a resolution, you know, and I don't think we'll go get all the way through that. And there's some things that just have to be studied, but I think we have to structure this so that they analyze something, we come to you for the money, and we fix it. They analyze something, we come to you for the money, and we fix it. And over a period of years, and, you know, we can pick off, you know, two or three or four intersections a year, work on those, in budget, do that in a reasonable fashion. Rather than coming back and saying, remember seven years ago, the consultant said this, we're still on page thirty. So I do think we, and, you know, I think we'll be getting together in the next several weeks, and I think we should discuss them, you know, approaches. And I think they'll be willing to work with us, and, you know, and the mayor's office and I have talked to them several times about this as well, so I think it's very valuable.
And it makes me think, you know, do we need a citywide traffic, so as I said, if you drive around the city, you can see what's going on. I think of downtown, I don't know that the, you know, the downtown intersections, especially one up front here, I don't know that there was a comprehensive study done of this area prior to that. You know, there are white lanes out there, there are new lanes, new signalization. Were you able to accomplish that to some degree without some sort of comprehensive study? How was that done? What was the process for that?
Well, I went there to do state work, you know, and state design as well, so I wasn't directly involved in that. And I think that the design probably started several years ago as well, so. You know, I think the study goes beyond just some of the traffic issues that you mentioned, counselor, you know, as Counselor Kane mentioned. We really have to get into his parking, you know, both residential and business, and come up with some solutions there as well. The, you know, the whole parking sign and parking restriction issue is almost out of control now in the city. Sometimes I think that when we send out a tax bill, we should send a sign with it. You know, we could end up becoming a city of signs. I know none of you want that, I don't think most residents want that as well. So we really need some thoughtful analysis of that, what we do. And I think the difficulty is, you know, one size doesn't fit all in the city. There's some areas where it's a bigger problem than others. I am concerned with pedestrians and pathways, in particular to the MBTA stations, that we can find a way to make that safe and to encourage it a little bit more. You know, as well as bike paths. I know the mayor's office and I have discussed this, and, you know, everybody wants more bike lanes and bike paths, you know, and want to be green, and there's no argument. But we have to find a way to do that safely. And just by putting a paving marking down doesn't mean somebody's safe. So I think we need to put together some thoughts about that. You know, our initial thoughts is, you know, we should try to make it as convenient as we can for people to bike to the T stations. And that will take some traffic off of the roads. I'm not sure how we do that, given the, you know, how narrow some of our streets are, but there's some of those issues I think have to be discussed in the study or get some input from outside. You know, as far as bringing some of this talent in-house, I kind of share that thought, you know, and I think we've done that with the electricians, by putting them together, we've been able to utilize them much more effectively on behalf of the taxpayer. I'm not sure if that, we could duplicate that with traffic engineering, just because this type of traffic engineering help is just not readily available for hire. So I could be wrong, and hope I'm wrong, if maybe there's something else.
I mean, I think just in my, in my day job, I see, I guess in this job too, you can see it's, it's almost cyclical in terms of the talent pool that's available. When the construction market is hot, traffic engineers are at premium in the private sector. They can make a ton more money in the private sector than working for a municipality where the market, when the real estate development market goes down, then they're looking for government jobs to get through the meantime.
Oh, absolutely.
It's the same with the engineers, I expect we'll talk about this with Commissioner Ramandi later on, about the, you know, the city's filling of the city engineer position. It's, you know, it's difficult to do at this point. I see her here almost done, Mrs. Chairman. As, again, kind of going forward and being proactive, what, what's the role with, in terms of the traffic department looking at our proposed development?
We were, we were involved in review of every development plan in the city at the time. And as I suggested earlier, it was, you review it six times.
And do you look at it just in terms of whether or not it works, or do you look at it in terms of what, of the impact it'll have?
Generally, most of the developments hire their own traffic engineering firm to put forth an impact type of statement. So we analyze that, make sure that they're not harrowing on their, on their behalf. So that's part of that evaluation, that traffic review, make sure that the studies that they've done are actually accurate and fair and balanced. And make sure that they're aware of other developments in close proximity, you know, that they sometimes may close their eyes to, and say, hey, how is this going to work as well? So there's a lot of give and take in pushing and pulling in that process with the developers, and, yeah.
Do we charge for that? Is there any type of traffic impact review fee that we're charging as a municipality?
I do, I don't think there is.
Would you mind looking to see whether or not any of the communities charge that, if it's something we could legally do? I mean, these folks are coming in, the more development we have, the more burdensome that is on our limited resources. There could be the potential for an offset fee there, kind of like a, you know, a plumbing inspection fee.
Yeah.
And it's typically have like a document review fee, I think, in certain circumstances. But yeah, like a, like a traffic review, traffic impact review fee for the amount of time and, you know, committees.
I would say a traffic review impact fee for every time you review the plants.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, really.
If it's more comprehensive.
Keep on renewing them again and again and again.
Right.
And, you know, quite frequently, you see, when you, when you're six reviews, so we didn't review this in the second review.
Right.
Well, it seems to have changed back to the way it was before, so.
And also, I think, encourages the developers to get it right.
The first time.
The first time.
Absolutely.
You know, rather than keep going back, going back, going, and then you're in almost a negotiation and a give and take with them. I'd also like to see, perhaps as part of that review, mitigation or recommendations from your department, perhaps, and I don't know if you do it now, but perhaps if there was some sort of standard, almost like memo, about, you know, this is the anticipated impact of this, this number of cars. And this is something that could be done to offset that, and this is how much approximately that would cost. And everyone was looped in with that, the zoning board, the planning board, the board counselors, the mayor's office, and we all kind of knew, because every development has a cost.
Right.
Right, to traffic, to roads, to police, to fire. I think all of our zoning codes speak to that as being a consideration as to whether or not a permit should be issued. Especially if it's not a buy-ride permit, you know, you build a single-family home on a single-family lot, you build a fifteen-story building downtown, that has an impact. And I think it's important to know what that impact is, which you guys tell me you do know, you're reviewing. But also how to offset that for the residents who already live here, and what that cost would be. I think that would help us in terms of kind of pushing developers to pay a little bit more into community benefits. It's one of the things I hear quite frequently when I get the calls about taxes, which is probably the fourth thing that people call me about. And they say, well, you know, I'm paying all these taxes, and all these developments are going on, why are my taxes going down? Why am I paying for, you know, this and that, and why aren't the developers offsetting that? They're the reason why costs are going up, and they're not wrong when they say that. So I'd like to see developers paying a little bit more, and I think a traffic mitigation offset would be something that, that will go a long way towards that.
I'll work with the planning department, too.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be interesting to see, and if it's the kind of thing that needs an ordinance from this council in terms of putting in place a traffic impact review fee and recommendation requirement for special permits, for instance, then, you know, I'd be happy to work with your office, the mayor's office, whoever, to put that in place, so it's codified. Developers know, hey, you're going to come to Quincy, this is, you know, this is one of the blocks that you have to check, this is what our expectations are. You can come and develop here or not, if you don't like it. But if you do, we're going to offset some of the traffic impacts that you're bringing with new developments, so that residents here aren't overburdened, and don't feel like the city's being overdeveloped, and anything applied. Thank you very much, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Valmucci. Michael, I hate to do this to you, but it was an absolute exercise to get the city's financial advisor to come before the body throughout this process. So she's been kind enough, she's got a staff scheduled to join us. I'm just going to kind of recess from traffic parking lighting, we'll resume it. Cinder is here, so, councilors, I.
How long will it be to stop?
Until we're done, yeah. I mean, we're looking at lunch at noon.
Will it be before lunch?
Probably after lunch.
Yeah, probably after lunch. I mean, it's eleven fifteen right now.
Are there any emergencies on?
Oh, please, by all means. And the other thing too, Michael, if for whatever reason it gets complex today, we still have, you know, more of an opportunity, so if we need to move.
Could we move to, is there anything else we must have seen?
Yeah, we do, it's actually for other people.
Oh, okay.
On the speed.
All right, I just didn't know.
I think this will take ten minutes.
Well, again, we're dealing with a very tight schedule. Right. Mike, and we're flexible here, so appreciate it, hate to do it, we were just, we earmarked this time, we're running a little later than anticipated, so.
Thank you.
Cinder is here, thank you.